At least the new normal, which is a term I really hate. That's what they all say. Right? So from what I understand, any votes or anything like that will kind of be like a roll call vote. So we can hear you. On the record that way. My understanding, we're not live tonight, but it will be broadcast at a later date. And we'll go from there. So we have the meeting minutes from March 10th, which was our last meeting. If anyone have. Everyone's had a chance to review them if there's any questions or comments. If not, I will entertain a motion to. Accept. The meetings as written.
Motion to accept the meetings as written.
Second motion.
So that was a motion by Wayne accepted by Dave. And we'll do a roll call vote. Wayne.
Aye.
Dave Cook.
Aye.
And Leila.
Aye.
Bruce Farley.
That's Bruce.
He's got unmuted himself.
Yeah, he's got unmuted.
I'll text him right now.
There he is.
There you go.
Bruce, you approve the minutes?
Yep.
And I am, well, I'm abstaining because I was not at that meeting. So four zero one. Then we have the minutes from the April 13th. Conference call. Pull that up here. So if I remember, that was just myself, Dave and Ken. Yes. So I'll entertain a. Motion to accept those minutes. If there's no questions, comments.
Yeah, I didn't know that meeting was happening. Nobody called.
Okay. Yeah, that was just, it was a quick, just to approve the. Water. Building so the bills could go out.
All right, I just wanted to let you know that I didn't blow it off.
No. Okay. I understand.
Sorry, I had sent that out via email.
I will make a motion, Mr. Clary, to accept those minutes.
So Dave, Dave Cook's making a motion, 10 seconds. All in favor. Wayne Carroll.
Opposed. I mean, uh.
Abstained.
Abstained, sorry. I was trying to think and nothing happened.
Dave Cook. Yes. And Leila. Bruce Far.
Abstained.
Abstained.
Yeah, because I wasn't there.
Abstained. So it's three oh and two for the minutes on April 13th. We had the executive session next. I don't know. I don't see Peter on here.
That doesn't need to happen. I had put that on there. I wasn't sure if he was going to call in for that or not, but um, he is not calling in, so.
Okay, we'll table that to the next.
Given the email I got, he said to notify him if he wanted to call him.
He did, just to butt in here, they, he did send out an email later today to everybody. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it regarding. Uh, that situation, so just so everybody knows.
I didn't see that, but.
I got it. Came out about four o'clock.
Okay.
So he has nothing filed. He doesn't have a, um, um, a written proposal.
Okay, we'll table it the next time and if we need to bring him in for the next meeting. Can someone, I don't have that email. If someone could forward that to me. I'm not sure where.
I'll, I'll forward it to you, Kevin.
Alright, thank you. I want to skip down to. Old business. We haven't met. I myself haven't been there in a while, but as a board, we haven't met either, so I kind of want to get caught up on. Some of the ongoing stuff and some of the projects and, and then we can get back up into water sewer abatements and. So a few. Water bills. So jumping down Mastod, PA Landers. So just what I've been doing, I got. Some information from Mastod. On. Payments to date. Quantities to date. Things of that nature. Um, reviewing those. Particularly starting with this two or three of the items that are way over double and triple the estimate that environmental partners had. Um, I have discovered some things that. Mastod has approved for payment that we shouldn't be paying for. So. Once I get all that together, we'll package.
About the hardware and that type of stuff.
Yeah, so mega lugs.
Yeah.
So there's almost 6,000 pounds in mega lugs, over 6,000 pounds in mega lugs. And you don't get paid for mega lugs. According to. The spec. And we're about 7,000 pounds over, so that's the reason why we're over. I have some questions on the gravel as well. They have. Basically. Every trench full depth, all new gravel. I know Dennis, you said in a lot of areas they hit, the material they took out was a suitable for backfill and that's fine. But the numbers out of there would have been almost over 4,000 ton of gravel that they would have had to bring in. And if they did, that's great, that's fine, you know, we'll pay it, but I just want some additional. Backup and.
Yeah, information.
Some verification, that's a lot of material.
In slips.
Right. They, um.
And on the other side, they would have had to get rid of. 4,000 ton of material.
Right.
So I want some little better information. I mean, that's a $30 a yard item.
Right.
So it's quick. And that's another one that's significantly over the estimate.
About. A week before this bill, I talked to Chris Ciara about how he was that, you know, that the estimate, you know, the original, um, you know, was under one for, um. The original project and the second extent, the additional work was going to be under three, you know, that, uh, you know, he was, and he was, his projected costs were starting to go over 1.3. And I, um, you know, basically said that that was something that, that we weren't going to be real happy about. So he was. Supposedly going to look over his stuff and, um, and, and, um, and see if he, he did. Uh, got some things over, but pretty much was pretty adamant about, uh, you know, we're, we're planning on 1.3. And not anymore.
Well, that's all we have. You, you know what I mean? So we, we extended the limits and did that added work based off of, you know, an estimate. Now, an estimate of 280,000 plus where we were to date, and that fit within our budget. So if, um, that doesn't fit, then. We need to appropriate more money, you know, and then that's not a easy task or a quick task. Especially when no one really knowing when we can have a town meeting.
Well, I spoke with Frank today and, uh. They're looking to, uh, uh, or he is looking to have a town meeting in June. I think it's June or July, I forget. But, uh. He, he is planning a, trying to plan a town meeting, so.
Okay. I would think in the next week or so, I, I should at least have my. Analysis done. Dennis, what I'd like to do, if you can, I know you're working on getting a set of plans.
I do, I have it, I have it on disk, but since my computer has been changed, I don't have a way then. Josh is going to get me set up for that. Or I could, I, or I could, I don't know. Do you, do you have the ability to read the disk?
I don't.
Yeah.
No.
So I can either, you know, I can, I can see if we can convert it to onto, onto a flash drive. And I don't, if, if you can read that. To, to print it all would be. Uh, I'm not so sure how successful I would be with that.
Okay.
So I. Let me jump in. I, I have it on a zip drive, on a flash drive. If you want me to leave it out. I can do that, or I could drop it by. And I also have it on a disk, so if I need it, I have the ability to read the disk. So I can drop the, the flash drive off if you'd like it.
Yeah, I mean, all they really need is the water plans. I, I just want to overlay, you know, they have the stations and locations of everything they did. And I just kind of want to. Overlay that. I know we, you know, there was a few more six inch services and things like that. And Dennis, I may need, well, I will need your help and. Maybe Dave Lemay's help, just to kind of go through it and confirm. You know. There's a, a ton more one inch services, so. Is it just, you know, we didn't know they were, we found them, you know, and if we just kind of put them out in the plan, it shouldn't take too long, just kind of walk through it and. You know, verify.
Yep. Okay. Um, thanks, thanks for the town meeting. The warrant is currently posted at the DPW here. And it will be at, uh, 600 Franklin Street, the, the regional high school. And it's going to be, um, it's currently posted for the 22nd day of June at 7:30.
But that hasn't been confirmed yet. So there's still questions about that.
Yep. Alright, I guess Dennis, where are they at with, as far as Landers on the work? Are they, I mean, it looks like they're pretty much. Done, or are they?
They have, they, they're right now, so all the new stuff is in. Now they're, 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 they're installing some hydrants that were in the, um. The, a part of the new plan. Um, and then the other thing that they have to do is they have to disconnect, um, the Y and the, the feed from the Y, but all the, as far as all the, the, um, new water main and water services. It's, it's done. They're, you know, they should be, they should be, you know, if they, if they stay with the water part. You know, as opposed to jumping around to some of the other work, um, they should be done this week.
They were milling oven street today and, uh, up to school and they're going to be raising the castings and all that. They're putting the sidewalks in, so.
Really? Okay.
Alright, well, I'll finish this up. Obviously, you know, this, the money side, but. The acceptance side too, we should be involved with. Sidewalks and paving and all that stuff. Do we, we don't give them castings, do we? Or they, Mastod supplying all casting?
They, they, so far, they, they provided everything.
We don't have to provide the castings for, uh. Going up to Glen Street and going up to School Street?
No.
Good deal.
It was all.
Yeah, they don't have, yeah.
I did, I did email you the, the original estimate. I don't know if you got it.
Yep.
Yeah, I have, I have that.
For, for the extension.
Yep. Yeah, he doesn't have castings. I guess. You know, if we mill, when they mill it, if the castings are in bad shape, um. I guess I would recommend we. Supply them to them to. Put new ones on.
Yeah, there's not that many.
Right. I don't, you know, um. Can only really, there's one, one in Glen, you know, there's not that many that are, um, in the, the additional part.
Right.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else on the board has any questions or. It's kind of where I'm at as far as. On the money side. So Dennis, I'd just like to hold those two estimates. I think they were. Maybe about 200 grand between the two of them. I mean, I'm probably close to already 100 grand that they owe back. So it has the. Release of money.
12 and 13.
Yeah. You know, plus like. As built and. All that stuff too. Mastod doesn't hold any retainage, so it's one of the challenges. Mastod doesn't hold retainers on contractors, so when you pay, you. You pay it all. So like, we just keep an eye on it.
Do you want me to get in touch with Chris and go over any of this stuff?
I want to, let me get it all kind of, at least the, the major items, you know, instead of feeding them, you know, this, 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 and, you know, we get the, whatever. There's probably four or five items that we're going to have to discuss. And we'll get those together and, you know, I'll get the info to him so he can look at it on his end and then we'll sit down. You know, where they're, you know, there probably only will be one more estimate, right? And it can't be too much if. You know, the, those estimates were through May. I just don't want to have to go and take money back. It's. Paying.
Kevin, I was going to suggest. Maybe, forgive me if you said at the end of the meeting, um, would somebody do some kind of summary memo or maybe a letter to them, kind of. Stating, you know, what was agreed to at the meeting and then also about the deliverables at the end that they owe those, so they get it planned, uh, in writing. I know we don't have a lot of control, but at least it's on paper that we requested.
We, we pay the bills, so we do.
We have all the control. We have the money.
Well, we do on the water part, but, uh, I'm, I'm wondering about the rest of the project too, you know.
Yeah, yeah, less, less control, but we still should be involved. I mean. You know, it's technically their road, but. You know, with, with something puddles or something doesn't work, we're going to get the call.
Yeah, that's all I meant. Yeah, that kind of stuff. Yeah.
I, I have, uh, Chris did tell me a couple of weeks ago when I talked to him about the, the, um, the last estimate. National Grid now is they want to get in and do a new water, I mean, new gas main from Temple to Glen. So, uh, that's, that's their, you know, they're, that's going to be an add-on that they didn't originally, and they're going to affect their, their timeline for that end. You know, the 1827 end.
Oh, I guess better now than. Six months from now after it's all paved, but still, it's. It's. It's, it's typical, but it's typical.
Good planning on that part.
Yeah.
The timeline though.
Um, as far as National Grid, I would propose too, we, we probably ought to communicate with them frequently. I know Bruce probably does, Bruce Martin. But, you know, formally in capacities like to, you know, we, if they have any type of upcoming plant sheet they can give. That'd be great.
But, no, is National Grid going to pay for half the asphalt? Really?
Uh, it's just a little trench, a little narrow trench.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's okay, it's probably going to settle anyway, so.
Well, then they can pay for a quarter of it. Hey Dennis, what's their timeline on when they're going to do it?
Uh, they're still, just because National Grid wants to do it, they've made an application to it. All right, first, Matt, you know, it's the same thing with us. They got it, you know, it happened, but they got to go through the same process we did. You know, first, uh, Mass DOT has got to say, okay, well, you know, that's something we want, we want to get done, we'll let you, you know, do. And then they got Mass DOTs because this is a federally, you know, um, subsidized project. The, um, they got to, you know, run it through the, um, through the, um. Through the federal government, uh, to, you know, to, um, to, to get approved too. And, you know, if they say no, then. Nope.
Kevin, what's the moratorium on, uh, on state roads? For, uh, once they hot top it?
I, I don't know. Probably five years, something like that. But.
I, yeah.
Usually what happens, they plead. You know, they plead, I have a, you know, we have a leak and it's a safety. You know, we got to go fix a leak. We don't want it to blow up.
Right.
You know.
I can tell you. Through the winter, Ron, it won't get done until next year sometime. I know 2022 was what, the cutoff date?
I could tell you, um. I could tell you that, uh, Bruce here, that, um, National Grid has submitted road opening permits for that to us and to the state. So I think that's something that they're going to move quickly on. It doesn't sound like, is, I mean, she's, I've actually gotten two emails this week asking me, uh, about that road opening.
So they're going from the intersection to Glen Street with, uh. With gas main, right?
That, I believe so.
Okay.
Right.
Alright. Alright, we'll see. Anything else? Anyone else got any questions? Landers, Route 18, anything?
You mean as far as the old business? You want to go through all of that or just?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of just get up to date. So water meters, obviously.
That's basically on hold. The only, like, we try, we, you know, if it, if the building's been unoccupied for two weeks. Or if it's a new home. Or, um, if we have a trustworthy plumber, you know, that we, we've had, uh, dealings with before, we'll let him put a meter in. You know, you know, um. But other than that, it's, you know, pretty much at a standstill. The, the, you know, you, you were involved with the, um, phone call on the Forest Main project. And they're, um, you know, it sounds like the lawyers are going to have something soon. So we can sign. As far as environmental. Environmental partners contract.
Well, just kind of on the water meters, I think it's just whenever. It's safe. Obviously, we need to hit it as hard as we can hit it. You know.
Right. I mean, we have, we, you know, um, we've, we've done all the notices now, you know. And, and so we're still. You know, be able, as soon as we can get out there, we can, you know, basically start hitting every house.
Okay.
The, um, the final bill for, um, Rainor Ave is in and you guys need to sometimes stop by and, you know, look it over and, um. Um, you know, sign that. There's about three, three, three different sets of copies and. That's got to be processed. That, you know, compared to what. Was appropriate and there's plenty of room.
Okay. Wish we could hire them again. That went very well.
They did a great job. They really did.
Complete Streets, Bruce.
Okay, um, so I can, well, Complete Streets, we'll start with that. We got the green light, everything's going. We actually had surveys in town today. They'll be back tomorrow. So things are actually started as far as, you know. People out in the street starting to work. We, I hope to have that project done before the fall. Uh, it, we're still going to have to put it out to bid. So, um, but we still plan on having that done before the fall. You know, I, I'll just run down if you're looking for like an operational update, uh, as far as employees, uh, in the COVID situation, we continue to do what we did from the beginning. Separation. Man, attract, taking temperatures, et cetera. Uh, hopefully that's going to wind down a little bit, relax a little soon. We can open the office. Operationally also, uh, we're currently down three employees without getting into details, uh, but we're down three for, um, various, uh. Extended. Sick leaves. On that note, I would like the board's opinion. I don't know if I need a vote, but I like, uh, uh, I would, uh, like to go ahead and advertise. For a temporary employee, probably on the order of eight to 12 weeks for the summer. It's just with two, uh, I can treat employees and one of them's, uh, due to COVID, he's only working three days a week due to daycare issues. I, I just really need that guy and hopefully I can find somebody with landscape experience, uh, doesn't need a CDL, uh, spoke to Frank about it. It's doable. We just have to, uh, talk to the union reps. And, uh, you know, get the ball rolling on it.
What about budget wise?
Uh, well, budget wise, the, the two employees that, that, um, two out of the three employees are in, out of my division. And they're currently getting paid for through workman's comp, so it's not coming out of my budget.
Right, so 60%, 60% per man?
Yeah, correct. And, and as of July 1st, even if they supplement the comp, their comp, workman's comp, uh, with a day and a quarter a week, it still leaves me. Plenty of, uh, leeway to hire a. Um, obviously you'll be at a lesser rate than the, than the lowest paid union member, uh. But I'll have, I'll be able, I can afford it.
Yeah, it'll be, he'll, he'll come in as step one labor, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'll probably, or less if he doesn't have a CDL, because he doesn't actually need to have a CDL. He just needs a guy that can mow and weed whack and drive a pickup truck.
Right.
So we'll have to come up with, uh, we'll have to come up with a rate. So I'll be working with the town administrator on moving forward as far as everybody's in agreement for me doing that. Moving forward on that, uh, we, I took delivery today of the granite, yesterday and today of the granite for the Winter Street, uh, Chapter 90 project. So we staged it on a side street up closer to the job and we have some in the yard and T L Edwards. I knew it was pretty much, uh. Top it at the bit to get in there and mill it and level it. And as soon as they mill it and level it, we'll get in there and start, uh, pulling up some sections of sidewalk and laying the curving. So, uh, that's going to tie up my highway crew pretty much on a daily basis. That's another reason that temp work is going to be important. Because we utilize the, uh, highway crew for, uh, mowing and weed whacking a couple of days a week usually. And that's not going to be able to happen if we're laying granite every day. As far as, just going backwards a little bit, as far as the, uh, the protest on Memorial Field Sunday, um. The field came out unscathed, um. You know, our guys helped set up the day before and, and, uh, you know, I'm happy to say that the, uh, organizers left the field in good shape. There was no trash.
It was spotless.
Yeah, so we guys, how you feel about it, they did a good job as far as leaving it the way they found it.
That's good. Okay. So the Forest Main project, we had a good call. Was it last Friday? Um, I think we got through a lot of the. Scope and clarifications and I think there's really just a few legal things that the two, uh. Between the town council and environmental partners' attorney that. They both kind of left it as, yeah, we can, we'll, we'll work on some language. Zed from Environmental Partner has already sent back his revision earlier this week. So. I think the, the hope would be maybe next week. That we'd have a contract that, um. That we can sign. And get moving on the. Design permitting, um, and everything we need to, um, have 100%. Bid documents. For the Forest Main, so. Obviously, we're still not going to make the. Summer town meeting now, but. We definitely should have it for the fall.
Did anyone talk to Frank? Are we going to have a special in the fall?
I, I think we have to. I think, again. I wish we had it all done, but I don't want to wait any longer than we have to. You know, same thing, if we can get. You know, get in front of a town meeting in the fall and get the funds appropriated for construction and.
I think it's done in the spring.
Yep, maybe, yeah, maybe it's in the winter, you know what I mean?
Depending on the weather.
Yep. I mean, that's, it's all deep work, so that's all good, good winter work.
Yep.
So. So I think that'd be the. The process. So like I said, once we got everyone together, went, went pretty well. So. And then the other contract that Bruce and I worked on with, for the Complete Streets with Environmental Partners, we ironed out and got. Couple of things added in for some of the survey and the sidewalk and ADA compliance, stuff like that. And, um, that was a much lesser. Contract as far as, uh. Language and pretty straightforward, so. Do we have, Bruce, we haven't seen that back yet, have we? Bruce Martin?
I'm unmuting. We have, yeah, we, we got that, uh, the, the contract from, uh, from Environmental Partners.
We did, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I put it out. Um, it's been signed, that's why we're moving forward, uh, you know?
Okay.
Gave you the, uh, the okay to proceed.
Okay, alright, so there's some stuff we got signed at the, uh, on the table there at the office. I think some other things too. Alright, then the only other, um, glassing an old business, we had some sewer billings. And I guess Dennis. What was the history on? Were these, um, I, I forget to be honest. I know we looked at them a while ago.
Dennis is talking, but no one can hear him. I can hear him because I'm in the office, but I don't know what's going on with his voice.
It's, it's on, there you go.
We got him.
Hello, oh, okay. Um, so, um, this was the subject that was, you know, this is really old business and you guys had pretty much actually made up your minds that you were, we were just gonna start from now on. You know, we weren't gonna try and, uh, go back on anything, you know, in, uh, here. Um, that we were just gonna start from now on, um, uh, to, to, uh, correct the, um, the readings, the way we, and, and, um, but you guys never actually voted on it and, you know, we never actually, you know, this is what we're gonna do. But I think you would pretty much were all of the amount of the mind that, uh, instead of trying to look back and, and, uh, and recover anything in the past that we just, um, you know, it's not a mistake that, that we had nothing to do with them and that we'll just, um, start from now on. I just want to make sure that that's what you intend and we'll send a letter to that effect to them, because these people never really got an answer.
Okay, was this the connection? They connected?
The connection?
Yeah.
Right, that we found out later?
Yeah, the dates didn't match up or whatever, or wasn't recorded or something, okay. Um, alright, do we? So we need to abate a bill eventually, right? Is that where it's at?
Nope, there's nothing to, there's not, there's nothing to abate.
Right.
You know, there was no
There was no bill.
You know? Right, so the thing is, right, and, and like I said, this was no, no mistake on their part. Um, it was just that, you know, we need to produce some kind of correspondence to let these two individuals know that, you know, we're just gonna, you know, start, start from the time we discovered the, what happened.
Okay.
Not, 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 not try and go back.
Alright, so as far as the minutes goes, we can close the item and then if you want to draft a letter, then
Right, and you can, I'll give it to you and, and, um, and if you're in agreement, we'll sign it and just kind of close, you know, settle this once and for all for them.
Okay. Okay.
I'm in favor of that. Uh, related to that, I was gonna say to the, um, we had an update on the, the school item. I don't, we, we may not want to talk about it right now, but
We can't talk about that right now.
Yeah, can't.
Okay.
It has to be done in the executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just definitely think we should. Yep, okay. Um, just dropping back to, uh, something more here on Bruce mentioned, the, uh, the staffing uh, concerns. It seems that there might be some other options, uh, as well, so I didn't know if we wanted to talk about that. Obviously. You know, I think Bruce, you could decide if it's something that could be done with manpower or, you know, hours, where you need that extra body, um, like for a crew, so to speak. So is it, you know, something that can be done, um, added up or sacrificed? Or these things that you, you don't want to leave, um, by themselves, so to speak, working on something?
Are you pertaining to the, the temporary employee? Not sure of the question.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, regarding the temporary employees, um, it's actually picking up another person. Whatever you had suggested, I'm just asking the question, is it something that can be handled with, uh?
Existing staff?
Existing staff.
Existing staff.
I think he wants to box this person around. I mean, he's, you know.
Um, right now I'm working with, uh, two pocket tree employees Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, and then one pocket tree employee on Thursday and Fridays. So, yeah, I need, I would, I really need to get a guy, I'd like to get a full-time guy in here at least for the, you know, for the summer months, uh, you know, or, or depending on how long the other employees are out, I, that's why it'd be temporary position if, 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 uh, if another employee says they're coming back October 1st, then I could, you know, keep the temp until then. Um, you know, can we, like I said, we have, we have some big projects around town and they're gonna eat up the, you know, the, the crew, the highway crew, they're gonna be busy doing those, those big jobs. And, uh, even when they're over, yeah, they'll help out with the, um, with the pocket tree stuff, but, you know, there, there's a lot of acreage that we're trying to take care of with one in, you know, one and two-thirds or one and three-fifths, uh, manpower right now, uh, you know, park, road, cemeteries, town hall, police station, memorial field. I mean, it's, it's a lot and, you know, yeah, the growing slows down a little bit in July and August, but I, you know, I'd still like to get that guy in here. And, uh, sure, um, like, like now, now I keep, Bob's, uh, chatting on the side here. We, we can make it, we can help out with having guys come in, um, you know, maybe staying late. Um, and doing some other things, uh, to help out pocket tree. But, um, you know, we, we have Saturdays open now and, you know, sometimes I have a hard time filling the Saturday leave file. So I don't know how good, how well I would do filling Saturdays, a Saturday or staying late time during the week. Uh, you know, something. Certainly you try it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's something that, that's something we have to, uh, I lost you. Are you still there?
Me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I lost my, uh, my, uh, video. Um, that's something that we should talk to the union about. See where they stand. If they want to work the overtime or not, you know?
That's all I was just asking, but thanks. I'll, you know, you check with the guys, get out and, and we should post it anyway, uh, doesn't hurt to have, uh,
But, I mean, gentlemen, like we've seen in the past, we've given them the overtime, i.e. the water meters. And nobody wants to work extra hours to put them in. So you can't say you want to work the overtime and then don't do it. So I understand what Bruce is coming from where these guys say, yeah, 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 we're gonna do it. And then when it comes time to do it on a Saturday, it's too hot and they don't feel like working. So, I, I understand what Bruce is saying. Because we're, we're on that road right now with the water meters. And it's making me less than happy.
Alright, thanks guys. Yeah, I think, obviously we gotta check with the unions. I thought there was some language that we could do seasonal employees, but I might be mistaken, but and then Dennis, obviously, you know, hiring, so that'd be up to you guys. I don't think, you know, we don't want to wait till another meeting and all that, so, you know, I think we'll leave it to you to talk with Frank and talk with unions and see what, uh, you can do within the guidelines, the contract and do both off the overtime and it sounds like you still need a guy. If you only got one guy in two days a week, you know?
And you're down three.
Right.
Yeah, but the problem with the one guy that, the guy that's here only two, three days, I still have to pay him for the other two.
Right.
Yeah, no, we get it, we get it.
Alright, anything else in old business?
I'm good.
Good. Um, so we got some water and sewer abatements. And, um, a couple additional commitments. Um, Amy had summarized them. So we have, uh, 165 Bula Street. Um, an abatement, so these are all abatements, 165 Bula. 32850 for water, 20390 for sewer, overestimated. Um, 857 Temple Street. 8497 water, 5274 sewer. Um, and again, on 857 Temple Street is a second for, uh, another quarter for 26782 water, 16623 sewer. So Amy, that says demoed, so the building was demoed? And we're still billing?
Yeah, yeah, so apparently the buildings were demoed and I don't know if the accounts didn't get, um, deleted. Because I believe they were demoed and they went to either one, like a whole nother building, like all together as one unit instead of separate building.
Where is this property? Is this the property where the condos are going in?
Yeah.
Isn't it down by, uh?
The lady's property?
No, it's corner of Lombard, isn't it? Amy?
I, I believe it's part of the corner of Lombard, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, Dennis, do we, do we typically go remove the meter or at least turn the water off before they demo? So is this just a?
This?
Hopefully the new system with automated and all online will, will be able to catch things like this.
The new system did not, it was not deleted out of the new system and the new system built it. Without any input from us.
Okay.
And that, in the meantime, the building had been, you know, demolished. The, and, and actually what was two accounts was converted into four new accounts.
Okay. Alright, um, a couple others here. 100 Essex Street. Our bill, we're abating our own bill. Seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, there's just two of those, so I guess that's two, uh, two periods.
No, one is for the office and one is for the barn.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I forgot that, yep, so. And then the last abatement is 31, uh, Lazell Street. 34467 water, 21393 sewer. The property was foreclosed. So
And the town owns it.
So the town owns it. So we just have to write that off. Okay? Um, then we have three additional commitments. Um, 102 Park Ave. Seventy-two fifty for water, forty-five for sewer. One Paradise Lane. Seventy-two fifty for water, forty-five for sewer, so are those minimum bills?
Yeah, so it's a minimum bill.
Minimum bills, okay. And 87 Diorav, uh, was underestimated. So we had an abate, uh, additional commitment for 35358 for water and 21947 for sewer. So one, six abatements and three commitments is what we're looking at.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, motion to accept the, uh, commitments and abatements as a red.
So, is there another discussion? Someone wanted to second that?
I'll second the motion. Let Bruce have it.
Oh, Bruce.
Okay.
Alright, we'll take a rule call vote. Wayne Carroll?
Yes.
Dave Cook?
Yes.
And Leila?
Yes.
Bruce Farley?
Yes.
And Kevin Clary is yes. So, commitments and abatements are approved. Uh, we got a couple letters here. Uh, John Smolcom, 27 Crescent Street. Um, and Amy shared the letters with us, high water bill, plumber checked things out, plumber said nothing wrong, must be meter.
Was that bench tested?
Um, we, no, we don't have that, we do not have that meter, it's still in, it's still, uh, there.
So we gotta check that, right?
Um, if he will let us.
What do you mean if he'll let us? I thought that was on meter.
Uh, we have not been able to get in to do that.
Alright, I guess we have to send a letter, because Wayne, we need to have that tested.
That needs to be tested so that we can determine if that's the meter or not.
Yeah, we can't answer his letter till it's tested.
But there's no way to get, uh, to reread it then or even sound it?
Have we confirmed, um, the readings? Sorry, keep peppering you, Dennis.
I'm not, yeah, um,
Can I say something on this for a second?
Go ahead.
So the guys, they read the meter for four different weeks in a row after the high bill and it's reading, um, back to nor, normal where it was before. So it just had the one spike, but it seems to be back to normal readings.
Well, like I said, if we test the meter and the meter tests fine, the water went through the meter and then we, we're all set, we can.
Yep, that's
So.
Alright, um, I'm not so sure how we could, you know, I mean, we could get a fairly good idea on our bench, but in order to, something certifiable that you could write a letter on, we'd have to send out and we generally
We're gonna do what we always do.
Now, we generally, uh, wait until they do that. We have two meters, uh, that we sent out that they, that the, the people paid the fee. But we can.
And then we can put a new meter in the house while we're at it.
That's what she was saying.
Yeah, when we can get in there.
Well, it's
We can't
Send them a letter. I mean, like Dennis, I mean, they, they sent us a letter contending the bill. We, we
Right.
You know, we, we need to test our equipment. So, if you need me to sign a letter, we'll, we'll sign a letter saying, hey, we need access. You know, cool, give us, give us a call to coordinate a time, we'll come in, we'll put a new meter in, which can be monitored even closer than the current one.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, um, the current COVID regs. Not, not
I, I guess I, I would say this Dennis, if, if we're practicing proper, you know, COVID guidelines, the guys have face coverings, they're wearing gloves. Um, you know, the, the homeowner allows them, and if the homeowner says, hey, I'm not comfortable, then we don't do it, and we wait.
Yeah.
But if we, if we follow the procedures and, you know, face covering, gloves, eyewear.
Yeah.
Don't touch anything, you know, wipe down anything.
Go through a bulkhead, maybe, you know, maybe they're not going through that house, like, I understand that. If, if there's one of them.
And then, and then, uh, you know, get it swapped out, get it tested by Webb or whoever does our testing. And then we'll follow up.
Yep.
And then, uh, like I said, and then the new meter will, like I said, giving them, give them even more visibility of what's happening.
Okay.
And I know, just my own, there were no, um, we can get into it probably next time, but there were no estimated, um, periods before this or anything like that.
I just, no, this address, not that I'm aware of, no. It's just that basically a, a one-time, you know, for whatever reason, you know? They went up and now it's reading better and better.
Yeah, there was no estimates on this. The last estimate they have, they only have one and it was back in 2015.
Yeah, so the bottom line is we have to test the meter, we just gotta table it and test the meter and, and go from there. We can't, we can't respond to a letter until we know what's going on with our equipment.
So let's table it for the next meeting pending, you know, getting results of a So let's table it for the next meeting pending, you know, getting results of a test on the existing and swapping it out with the new one. We had another one, ninety-four, ninety-four, ninety-six Pleasant Street. Chris Bruce. Five-unit building in our hot water heater failed and flooded the basement. We didn't know it failed for a while because there are two hot water heaters. It's like, yes, we're heating water. So he's obviously admitting he had a problem, he's looking for some help on his sewer because it didn't go down the sewer. Is that? What do you get from this, Dennis?
Yeah, yeah.
Which number is that, Kevin?
So this is ninety-four, ninety-six Pleasant Street. They got a two thousand dollar bill for water and sewer. The August through March.
Oh, wait a minute, here it is.
So in January, they had an issue with their hot water. The tank let go. So they used about double. Looking at their last four or five bills. So he's not looking for anything on the water from what I can see, he's just looking to.
Help on the sewer.
That's what we usually do anyway, so.
Yep. So his usage is actually pretty, pretty consistent, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-eight, eighty-five, eighty-eight hundred units. And then this one was seventeen thousand. So. I guess if. I'd say the same, you know, I mean, that we've done that in the past, we've just. You know, abated the difference if someone, if.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we abate the difference in the sewer, it didn't go down the, didn't go through the sewer system.
So, so very easy math, we could do half, that's about what is average, we said, he was at seventeen thousand, is usually around eighty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to the.
Half.
Yeah, half of his sewer bill for the August through March period. Second that or any further discussions?
Second it.
Is that a second, Ken?
Yes.
All right. There's no further discussions, we'll do a roll call vote. Wayne Carroll?
Hi.
Dave Cook? You gotta say aye, Dave, you can say yes. You're unmuted.
Yourself. Unmute, Dave.
We're switching to aye instead of.
You have to stay unmuted if you're on the board.
Ken Leila?
Ah, yes.
Bruce Farley?
Hi.
Yes.
There's background noise here, Jen said, I didn't want you to hear all that.
So Kevin, just to clarify on my end of things, so you guys just voted to abate eight thousand? Half of that, eighty-five hundred units?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, half of his, whether it's eighty-five hundred units or you can just take the half of the value, I mean, it was seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, so, you know, either way, half of.
Okay.
And then the last one. I don't have anything on this, nine sixteen Temple Street. I don't know if there was a letter on this, Dennis or Amy, if this is just a call-in, so they have.
It's.
High water bill wants to break in sewer because she had a running toilet. And that's a lot of sewer went down the sewer.
This gentleman just called the office and said that he, his, his, you know, after he got his water bill, he was aware that the, you know, the toilet had problems and he was just asking if there was anything we could do for him. The toilet used the water, the water went down the sewer, so I'm not really sure what we can do, if anything.
Yeah, I think that's a, it went in and came out, you know. It went in and came out of Brockton and we got charged, so unfortunately.
Yeah, it was used, so.
Yep. I don't think there's much we can do as a board. Last item, town water bills, this is your item, Dennis, what?
So we kind of talked about this in the past various times. But with the new billing, you know, Harmony, Harmony's gonna want to put something out there, you know, if we got an account somewhere. And these, you know, these, you know, of course we have accounts that, just to keep track of usage. But, you know, it's basically you're taking the money out of your left pocket and put it in your right. So the town buildings, we should, you know, adjust them in the new billing system. So, you know, we're not sending bills.
Correct, that's what I had discussed a few meetings ago.
Right.
Yeah, we recorded for coin purposes.
So I had Lonnie, and you know, to go through all of them, Town Hall, COA, Fire Station, Police Station. That, you know, we have three meetings here at the DPW, the Dog Pound and the Library. And it's, you know, right around fifty-three hundred dollars for everything, for all of them.
Right, I mean, we just need to record the usage for DEP purposes, but other than that, we should.
Unless you want to go through the motion, I mean, the act of abating it every time, you know, every billing period.
Right, that's silly.
I think we should just, you know, yeah, I just think we should just pull this out of the, you know. I mean, basically, it's, it's our billing ourselves, more or less.
Yeah, yeah. I think maybe a vote, just documented in the meeting minutes, I mean, I don't know when the policy started or ever was officially, you know, any type of documentation of who did get billed, but I think.
As we move from all hand billing to automated billing. This, you know, I mean, when it was done by hand, they just didn't do it.
Right.
You know, so it's really no different than what we've done all along. It's just that now it's automated through Harmony, so if we, you know, we just need to be aware of it and stop doing it and pull it out of Harmony.
Right, or just, or just not, yeah, just not bill, just record the usage and not bill.
Yeah, right, we want to, yeah, you're right, we want to, we want to know what it is, but we want to just, like I said, there's no sense of billing ourselves.
No, because we're gonna obey it, so. Yeah, that's just silly.
Makes more work for everybody. There's no need to. But do we want to, I mean, maybe just to document it in the minutes that we take a vote?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You know, someone wants to make a motion that we, you know, for town-owned properties, Town of Whitman Properties. I think is.
I do have the list if you want to be specific. Town Hall, the Council of Aging Building, the Fire Station, the Police Station, the DPW Office, the DPW Front Garage, the DPW Rear Garage, the Dog Pound and the Library.
Okay.
I make a motion that we take all of those bills out of the system, that we continue to document the usage. That's it.
Second that motion.
All right. Motion's seconded. Wayne Carroll?
Yes.
Dave Cook?
Hi.
Ken Leila?
Yes.
Bruce Farley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, Kevin Clary.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's all we had on the agenda.
Sorry, can I interrupt for one second? There was one more residence that I had sent you guys letters on, thirty-four Mayflower Circle. He had sent in a letter about his water sewer bill as well.
I'll tell you, did see that.
I'm sorry, I don't think I put that one on the agenda because it's after the fact.
Yeah, it's all right, Amy, I did see it, I wondered if it was still active. What was the question?
Yo, Dennis.
I'm not aware of that one, Ken, I don't remember, recall the.
I wonder if they did a leak test, checked the meter a few times at the meeting.
Dennis, I'm gonna bring the letter to you, I'll be right there.
Okay.
Such a sound test or what you said leak test toilet?
I don't remember this.
They had given that to me, they were there in Naples, Florida for part of the year and their bill was high or something.
I can't find the email, but. Forward it.
Kevin, I sent it to you on May nineteenth, if that helps.
Did you send it to all of us, Amy?
Nope.
Yes, I, yes, I did.
I just found it, okay.
I don't, I don't believe that we've done any, you know, we have not been able to get in there to, you know, do. You know.
Yeah, I'd like to. Dennis, sorry, I was, I'd like to do the same thing here, we should test the meter and then you'll change it, test it, test the old one. Yeah, it sounds like the hot water heater where you say, gee, there's potential on the sewer. I don't know. That's my opinion.
Okay, so they were away for the winter.
In the winter time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's the same thing, let's test the meter and you know, at least document anything we can document.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, it's gotta be tabled for the time being.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, put that with the, the other one there in Crescent. All we had on the agenda, I had said one thing, new business-wise, I wanted to give Bruce some credit for his community garden project.
Oh, yes.
I think we found the, found a very good use for the dump field, as it's so nicknamed. I think it's really taken off every time I go by, it seems like there's more there and people are really, really enjoying it and sense of community and all that stuff, so I, you know, appreciate Bruce's effort and getting it started and moving it forward, you know, putting in some of your own time as well.
The same, I think, should be said for the protest and all the work that was done for that with the barrels and the, you know, cordoning off everything, and there was a lot of work that was outside the scope. When they had other things that were on the agenda. They stepped up and did a great job and everything ran smooth and so, good job, guys, thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for that, Kevin, but again, you know, it was just, it was an idea and then the fact that so many people came out and were interested in doing it and, and then the cooperation, you know, and I know that they're working, but the guys, you know, my guys, the highway guys, maintenance guys, box three guys have all been very helpful, setting up the beds for the people, you know, filling them with dirt, getting them, getting them, getting them ready for planting and, you know, right now we're up to twenty-nine individual plots. And, and more interest seems like every week, so I, again, I want to thank the guys for their help.
Thank you, yep, I appreciate everybody's work.
That's excellent.
I, on the, in the commissioner's box, Bruce, this is to you, Porter Street, that tree?
Porter Street, yes.
Yeah, the, that, that tree was removed.
Right, I did go down there, they did it very quickly, they were, within a couple days of me going down there viewing the tree, Lewis Tree took it down for National Bridge.
Yeah, well, I, because it was, it was on private property, so, but I, I saw the letter, so I went down, rode down and looked at it, and it was down, so.
Right, I didn't deem the tree as a hazard, it was a live tree, it was healthy. But the residents of the street didn't like how it was hanging over the wires and National Bridge saw fit to pay Lewis to take it down, so. Worked out, I guess, good.
Okay. So I had, I don't know, any other, and Bill said any new business or any comments or anything from any other board members?
The ninety-one, we want to cross that?
What was that, Ken?
After ninety money, did we talk about the other one, we that's gone, not gone, only two?
Chapter ninety money?
So Bruce, kind of just chapter ninety, I know Winter Street's the big project this year, it sounds like.
Cross from the park to the cemetery, park, yeah, Essex.
Yeah, Ken, I'm not sure if anybody else hears you poorly, but your microphone's very broken up, but I'll, I think you're asking about chapter ninety money. We are gonna spend most of the chapter ninety money this year, we were doing Winter Street. Again, mill paved, rip up sidewalk, install new granite, install new sidewalk. All the way up to George Street where the existing sidewalk is, repaved the whole road to Franklin. Repainting various streets around town as we do every year. Paying, using some of those chapter ninety dollars to pay for the engineering of the Complete Streets Program. Doing an overlay of Homewood Drive, doing the top layer of Hoag, which has been sitting with the base on it for some time now, although that, that, I should say that that money's coming out of the water project. So, all that being said, we had three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of chapter ninety money this year, there was a thirty I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but it was around thirty-two thousand dollars extra we got this year. It's just a one-time thing where they do that occasionally, so that's why we're at three fifty-five as opposed to three twenty-three I think we usually get. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna spend it all, or pretty much all of it, within reason, on all those projects mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from any, any other board members or?
Just a question that on the executive session we're gonna do in person, is that the plan, we'll wait till we're.
Yeah. I would hope, and I think probably we should be able, our next meeting, be back to. I would hope, and I think probably we should be able, our next meeting, be back to at least in person, we may have to still stay six feet apart. At least not have to do it via Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I think July is gonna be a regular meeting.
Yep. Actually, which, so that would be July seventh? No, sorry, July fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yeah.
Fourteenth, next meeting.
A workshop, because I'm actually on vacation, so so July fourteenth will be the next meeting.
Got it.
Motion to adjourn.
Supersolson. Sounds like it. Sounds like we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Good with that, all right, Wayne?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ken? Ken's a yes, Bruce?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you all for joining and you'll see yourselves over and over and over again over the next coming weeks.
I think it's just, yeah, on YouTube.
You too.
See you, guys.
All right, guys, have a good day.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank God for broken cameras. We all thank God for that, Bruce.